Call the roll call, Christina.
Clark.
Here.
David.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Jorgensen.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Parsons.
President.
Mayor Lumberg.
Take a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Someone.
Second.
Second, okay. A motion to approve the agenda, any discussion? If in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, let's move on to the minutes of August 1st for the briefing meeting, August 5th for the regular meeting, and August 13th for the special meeting. Any changes that you see needed? Not all entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous three meetings, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, let's move on to claims on page 13. Any questions from anybody? If not, motion, please.
Thank you, please.
Second. Thank you. Motion and a second to approve the claims, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right, consent calendar. That will take a motion, please.
Need to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Okay, now, we're moving on to the fun stuff. So, this is visitors and timed items. We do ask if you have something that you would like to bring in front of council. We may ask you questions. We cannot make any decisions at this time because it's not been publicly posted. And we would ask you to keep your comments to five minutes so that we can keep the meeting going. We've got quite a lengthy agenda tonight. So whoever would like to address the council, please come forward and state your name and address at this time, anybody? Really? Wow. See, I run a quick meeting, let me tell you people. Okay, no one for public and time comments? Okay. Then moving on to the part B, which is the altered water report.
We had a press briefing on Wednesday to discuss the altered water report that was on a social media website. Some of the comments that we heard earlier in the week were that 2:00 PM on a Wednesday afternoon was not convenient time for residents to make it. So I put it on the agenda for tonight. If there are any questions about the altered water reports, we'd certainly be more than happy to answer those, or attempt to.
All right, does anyone have any questions on that water report? If so, you can come on up front and we'll try to address them for you.
Okay. I would have a question on behalf of some residents that I heard from. And I don't know if this is a matter of the council giving direction or where we're at specifically, but you know, there was a lot of questioning on what's next. You know, are we gonna take this further? A lot of citizens are feeling that we should, and I agree with them. So I guess I'll open up that dialogue if I may.
Usually potential litigation is something that we discuss in executive session, and I think that is appropriate to keep an executive session until a decision is made. There's a difference between criminal and civil, and there are certain things that we as a city can do with civil, and we don't have jurisdiction to do with criminal charges. So I think it's something that is appropriate to discuss in executive session. Any decision that is made in executive session, well, there's no decision that can be made in executive session. If there's ever a motion, that needs to be made out of executive session. So if there was a motion to be made that the city wants to pursue some type of legal action, that would be made outside of executive session.
And so you may request an executive session after the meeting if you so desire, okay? All right. Anything else on the water report? Okay, moving on to old business, we have the second reading of ordinance 592 supplemental budget on page 26.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the second reading ordinance 592, which is the supplemental budget. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right, moving on to second reading of ordinance 593 rezoning 300 South Split Rock from general business to in, what is it?
Institutional.
Institutional, thank you.
Motion to approve second reading.
Second.
And we've got a motion and a second to approve second reading. Any questions for the discussion? We've discussed this previously. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right, moving right along to golf course. We've got the CIP list. I see Zane is here. What else we got going on?
Hire Macy Clark in the lounge at 7:16 hour.
Move to approve. Second.
Got a motion, second to approve Macy Clark for the lounge discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right, Macy is hired. Zane, anything, or no, Zane and Andrew are both here, okay. Anything you wanted to bring forth to council? I see we have Great Life discussion on the agenda. What are we doing there?
This is council discussion.
Yeah, okay, okay. Council discussion, okay. Discuss, discuss away.
All right, let's discuss.
It wasn't everything, so.
Okay, so this is really just a follow-up from the last meeting where we had Tom Walsh come to council and ask us to consider discussions with them. When he was here, he talked about potentially being able to stop some of the bleeding. He talked about being able to retain staff. Everything he said was very positive. He had encouraged us all to reach out to Yankton, where they have set up an arrangement with Great Life for the last year. I don't know if anybody else reached out, but I did make that phone call just to get a better gauge for what it looks like from another city's perspective. And I took a lot of notes, and I won't go into a lot of them tonight, but it was all information that led me to believe that this conversation should continue further. Couple of bullet points that I can share from the conversation with Todd Larson at the city of Yankton was that they hadn't seen a profit in their books for like a decade. And kind of the writing on the wall for them was that, you know, trends are changing, and golf is really becoming about getting the volume, and that's very hard to do. So they kind of saw the writing on the wall and felt that it was time for them to get out of the golf business and leave it to an entity that did a really good job at running a golf course. Their amenity has remained as it was before they came in, and they were able to kind of cap some of their annual capital expenses. They have a lease agreement, I had that forwarded to me, I haven't spent a lot of time looking at it, but they receive an annual amount from Great Life. And then they have a capital expense that is set up over the next four years that splits some of those costs between the city and Great Life. It's been so positive that they're actually interested in continuing conversations they have to include some potential options with the Summit Activity Center and the new Aquatic Center that they are going to be in the process of building. They had absolutely zero regrets. Some of the conflicts that they had early on, and some of the fears that citizens had came forward with, just none of them came to fruition. So I wanted to open up the dialogue and explore us looking at this a little bit further. I'd like to propose that we do that and form a committee of those interested from council along with staff to see what there is out there for us for options.
In the past, Brian, who's been on the committee?
Typically, it was the golf pro, myself, the mayor, and the golf course representative from the council.
I think if the rest of the council wants to have a discussion, I think it should be in that November, December timeframe. I think now is a little premature, but that's one person's opinion. I think that gives us time to get the books closed out, or at least have a better know of where we're at for this year.
I guess I'm in favor of a conversation, you know, of what they could do for us. I just feel like as a representative of the citizens, our taxpayer dollars are going to, a lot are going towards that golf course. And if there's a way we can, you know, ideally maintain the ownership of the golf course, but see if there's some way that we can make it profitable, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to at least look at that option. So I would be totally for having some committee at least sit down and talk and see what they can do for Brandon.
So what do we do with that?
Tim, do you guys have viewpoints?
No, just a. I don't know, maybe after a year I'll figure this button out. I would totally be in favor of having some sort of discussion. I do agree with Chuck that I do think that you have to let the years sort of play out before you make a final decision, at least to see at least where things, now we know over the course of the last 10 years where things have sort of headed and been heading. I don't, I don't know, maybe by allowing the, because Zane did something great this year by letting 20 and unders play for free. And it seems to have increased the traffic. Now whether or not that leads to revenue, I have no idea. But it's a great program. Okay, I think, you know, in Great Life in general, I think that, you know, I think they have some good things because they're trying to grow the game, which is a good thing. I just don't know, you know, you have to really think about striking the right deal for the golf course, because I don't think that the Great Life model is necessarily applicable for every golf course in our area. Otherwise, every golf course would be doing it. I guess I would suggest that if you're gonna do some research, maybe you should contact like Emerald Hills, Garrettson, Canton, some of the other courses that have dropped out, because they're really kind of stagnant in terms of their growth. And in terms of what kind of a deal, just to give you an idea, if we were to do some kind of affiliate deal with Great Life, let's say we are an affiliate with Great Life, so they pay us so much per round, well, you're gonna see $200,000 getting sucked right out of our coffers, because all of our pass holders and are gonna be joining Great Life. So we're gonna lose our season pass revenue, we're gonna lose our cart lease revenue, we're gonna lose punch card revenue. So I guess I would be open for doing something with Great Life if it's a win-win for both our course and Great Life, so. The other thing to keep in mind about Great Life, like I said, I'm all for growing the game. In fact, you know, like Tim said, our junior program, like I said, we sold seven passes last year. Right now, we have 482 signed up, I just looked at it today. So, you know, we're trying to grow the game in the right ways in terms of the young people. I mean, that's our future, so we're seeing a very positive impact right now. And at the same time, we've taken in $10,000 in cart revenue that we never had, not to mention all the, you know, business we're getting in the lounge and some parents that are playing with the kids. So we think, we're pretty proud of that, and we think that we're doing a good job in that regard. And I personally, I don't really feel, you know, I know the golf course gets scrutinized quite a bit with its budget, and I personally do not feel that's fair. You can't look at the golf course just as a cash flow operation. Many city courses in the United States, they just, they don't look at it that way. If you call the National Golf Foundation, they don't even judge a golf course. They take out capital improvements, equipment, and debt service. So if you really want to, you know, analyze how our business is doing, take that stuff out, and we're doing pretty good. You're never gonna see this operation have a huge cash flow. It's just not possible. I'd be happy to sit down with you and show you every line item by line item what it costs to run this operation. It's a lot. I mean, you can ask Kelly, you can ask Andrew, there's a lot of expenses when it comes to running this operation, so. So I just wanted, you know, say that for what it's worth. And, you know, one other thing, I know Spring Creek, the only thing I can think of, I mean, unless the city council decided to just change management in general, I mean, that's totally up to the council if they feel that the management's not doing a good enough job and it's time to move on. I'd accept that. But, you know, the only thing I can think of that would be, makes sense, is what something like Spring Creek is doing. Spring Creek is just offering a discounted green feed. So they go over there and they pay, all the Great Life members pay 20 bucks, and they get golf in a cart. Now that could be, you know, something that could maybe work for us, because it's gonna bring more, you know, more bodies to our course and probably increase our revenue. Now, the thing you gotta be careful about is, all this growing the game is good, but you don't want to do it at the expense of your core customers that have supported the course for 40 years, okay? You get them upset, then you're back to square one. You're gonna lose a lot of these, a lot of these golfers, they're gonna go somewhere else, because they don't want their four-hour round turning into a five-and-a-half, six-hour round, because golf in general has already got a problem with it takes too much time to play, okay? So, you know, that's some of the things I've heard at other courses, is, you know, we don't want to turn our four-hour round into six hours. So those are just a few things that you want to think about before. And I'm, you know, I'm happy to, like I said, show anybody on the council our numbers, because I know you brought up the fact that this golf course is just bleeding, bleeding, bleeding. Well, I guess I would just disagree with that, that it's not.
That was Mr. Walsh's word, I was just repeating it.
Well, Mr. Walsh is wrong, in my opinion.
And that's why I want to have the conversation, see what options and possibilities are, you know, like the idea you just mentioned, you know, let's explore that.
Right.
I mean, we moved over 300-plus thousand last year, we're looking at 400-plus thousand this year, not counting any of the CIP list. I just think, like to Vicki's point, as the people spending taxpayer dollars, we have a prudent obligation to research these things. And Mr. Walsh said it had been five years since we had, there's only one person out of the seven of us, including the mayor, that was here then, so I just think it's time to look at.
The other thing I'd like to point out is, you know, it's pretty tough to have super good numbers when you've had six floods in two years, you know, basically in a year, actually the last two years. So that don't really help our business much, you know? I don't think that's an accurate reflection of how this, how we can do. You know, once our debt's paid off in two years, you know, our numbers are gonna look real better, or, you know, quite a bit better, actually, you know? But then again, we have, you know, a lot of capital improvements coming up that we have to do also, so. But if the council wants a really nice course, that's what it takes. And we do have a nice course, one of the nicest courses in our area. You know, Kelly does a fantastic job, Andrew does a fantastic job, Carrie does a great job, and I don't know, somebody mentioned something about retaining staff, I don't even know what that means. What does that mean?
I think we're just getting so far in the weeds here, again, just repeating what Mr. Walsh said at the last compliment.
I'm just rebutting Mr. Walsh, because I wasn't here. So we don't have, we don't have any issue retaining staff, we just.
No, he's saying if they partnered, he guaranteed that staff would be retained.
Oh, I got you, okay. I'm sorry, I thought, my misunderstanding, I thought you said we have a problem retaining staff. Okay.
But what I hear you saying, Zane, is that you would be willing to take a look at it?
Oh, definitely, yeah, I'm open, I mean, anything to, but I want, you know, I think it's gotta be a win for him and a win for us, you know, if, you know, so. Okay.
So those core group that you talked about.
Right.
What is their reaction to all this?
Not very good, not very good.
No, youth-free golf, not Great Life, youth-free golf.
Oh, they love, they like it. I mean, they love seeing the kids out there. You know, there's been some issues where we've had to go out there and do a little marshaling, because, you know, they need to learn a little bit more of the etiquette, but it hasn't become a big issue.
No.
No.
Zane, I have a question. My kids have taken golfing lessons there the last two summers.
Mm-hmm.
I knew nothing about this. No email was sent to me, nothing that I saw come home, and like, what do you guys do for marketing? Because nothing came for this golf free, for, to get the word out. Because I will all admit personally, I'm probably better driving the cart than, and then whatever, the golf club or whatever, the swing in the golf club, right? I'll admit that. So, but my kids enjoy learning the sport, so they have gone to you guys the last two summers, but I didn't realize until the council meeting that there was this golf free, and I'm like, oh, like my husband totally would, I would go out with them, I don't know how good I would do, but, you know, but I'm just saying, what marketing are you guys doing to get that out there?
We do, well, we have a website, we do newspaper advertising, we got radio, just word of mouth, word of mouth has been, I mean, once the kids know about it, they're just spreading the words. I mean, we got, I mean, when you go from seven passes sold to 480, I mean, that's a pretty big jump. I mean, that's actually pretty incredible.
I just want to end on this, you brought up some good points, but I still think maybe it's not Great Life, maybe that's not an answer for us, but I feel like the council owes it to the community to at least have the discussions, because just a little brief here, everything works well when minds can get together and talk about other options. And like I said, we just, I understand, you know, you know more about the finance side of things, but I just feel like it was a good discussion here, and I think it's worth it to our citizens to at least talk about Great Life, and maybe out of that we find something else, I don't know. But I think it's worth having a committee formed.
Okay, I agree, thank you.
Thank you, Zane. Yeah, come on up, Gary.
My name's Gary Schweitzer, I'm one of those 20-year season pass holders, and I have had some, you know, experience with the Great Life courses where I've gone and played them after they joined, and the four-and-a-half, five-hour round is a reality. The other thing, Zane touched on it, our course is really a gem out here right now. We hear nothing but great comments about it. We had the match play tournament here, people from the other courses couldn't believe the condition of this course, especially considering the floods. And my reason for saying that is because if we join Great Life, there is going to be a mass exodus from Sioux Falls out here golfing that we will never believe. And what's, what it's gonna do is it's gonna push the citizens from Brandon away to other golf courses. And I don't think that's what we want to do. The other thing I want to mention is that, and I've heard this mentioned many times, that the Brandon Golf Course has got to make money. My comeback is, the swimming pool does not make money, the library does not make money. I have no problems with that. That is part of the city, and as to me, the golf course is. I don't use those other things, I use the golf course. So I really don't think it has to, it has to turn a profit. I think it can come close, though, and I think it will. The other thing I want to remind people of, you know, I keep hearing Mr. Walsh is doing a great thing for golf, which he is, I have no problems with that. But I don't know how many years ago he was when he was here, three or four years ago?
Five.
Five? I just want to remind everybody, after the council rejected his offer, he took out a full-page article in the Argus Leader, basically bashing our course. And I don't know if that's somebody we want to do business with. That's all I have.
So what I'm hearing is that we would like to continue the discussion, but put it off for a period of time until we get some, get farther along in the season, is that what I'm hearing?
That would be my suggestion, so that we can see the numbers, because the 400,000 that you referred to, Dan, I think that that was premature with what we were seeing now, and we haven't closed out the books. That's why I would like to wait. I have no problem having a committee formed or anything, and I would agree with Gary, I think you take into account the library, pool, golf course, whatever else, those are quality of life issues, those are gonna help us attract businesses, and so I just totally agree with that, but I think we're premature to have a discussion right now when we don't know what the books are gonna end up looking like.
Just one thing to keep in mind, if this discussion and council gets serious about doing something in November, December, that's when we sell our passes, so you might see a negative possible impact of when we sign up, or, excuse me, when we sell our early passes. So I throw that out there.
Zane, you know how slow these things move, I mean, it could be, it could be decades, I mean, honestly. How long have I been here, and yeah, it just moves really slow. Okay, so what I'm hearing us say is that we're gonna pursue a discussion with a committee, but probably not until, what do you think is the best time for this, Brian? Put you on the spot.
We can start taking a look at it, you know, September, October, at the latest, maybe.
Let's just keep track of that, we'll just put it in the back of our mind to get it back on the agenda and put a committee together at a later date. Okay, work report, Park and Rec. Kelly, I'm sorry I didn't see you back there, so thanks for coming. Andrew, you too. Guys are doing a great job. Is Devin here? Nope, okay. Do we have anything besides the work report for Park and Rec?
Nope.
All right, we've got that going, all right. Public safety, we have a promotion on the docket. Chief?
Yes, as the council is aware, I sought approval for the post in the sergeant position, and you approved that, we advertised the position. We had three candidates, and I'm proud to nominate Alex Palmer for the position of sergeant, he's here with his spouse, Kim, and I want to present that to the council. He's had 13 years of dedicated law enforcement experience here in the police department in Brandon. Prior to that, he served in a jail and has a breadth of knowledge that will be of benefit to the younger officers on night shift.
All right, and that takes a motion, I presume?
Yep.
Second.
We'll let former chief get the second on that one, okay? Just out of courtesy, okay. We've got a motion and a second to nominate Alex Palmer for sergeant. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Hey, congratulations. I have something, yeah, let's give him a round of applause.
Apparently I was supposed to wear a uniform. I gotta shoot those, because he did go over the protocols.
Don't say that when she's fitting something.
Family probably gets the most credit. We volunteered for the job or picked the job. They have to put up with it.
Yep.
Who else you got here?
Uh, my daughters, Amanda and Peyton. Uh, my son is also a police officer, but he's up in Minnesota.
Oh, cool.
He doesn't make it down.
Okay. Well, terrific. Congratulations, gals. All right. Anything else under police? Okay. Okay, cool. That's a fun one to do. All right. So, Black Party, do we have to do the, um...
Did you do the Alex Palmer, or, okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, we need to do the, the wage change, or is that included?
That was, I assumed that was included in the motion.
Okay. All right. Okay, go ahead. Black Party.
Hello, I'm Brenda Thornton. Seek an approval for the Black Party. This will be the third annual event that we've held this event. We do get barricades from the city. Those will go up between 5:30, taken down at 10:00. If needed, they can be moved for emergency vehicles. Um, we have obtained the signatures from our street. There's two residents that wanted access to their property, so the barricades will be set beyond there, so they'll still have access, and then the event area will still be protected with the barricades.
Good.
Any questions?
This must be a good party if you're on year three, huh?
Last year we had over two hundred people.
Oh, my.
So we're expecting more.
Good for you. Oh, that's great. Good thing to do. Yeah, good block.
They make it fun. Potluck, you know, movie for kids, so it's good.
Nice. Nice.
I'd move to approve.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve a Black Party for eighteen hundred, West Thomas Circle. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Oh, and have fun. And thanks for coming forward. Appreciate it. Streets, got the work report. And that's on thirty-eight, and then we've got a pay app. Tammy?
Lunch pay apps.
Hmm?
Lunch pay apps.
Lunch pay apps. Thanks, Palmers, for coming. Thanks for your service. Appreciate having you in Brandon. Okay, Tammy's spending money. Go for it.
I have some money. Um, Brandon Park Edition is the first one. That is for three hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and sixty-six cents. They are almost done with phase one and two of this project and should be paving here pretty soon, and then they will tear up phase number three, which is right in front of the museum. So this one's going pretty well on schedule.
Is it going pretty well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Motion to approve pay application number two. Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve pay application number two. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? All right. Next, pay application number one for Holly Boulevard.
Oops.
So that's on page forty-five. What can you tell us about that?
Um, road is closed as of today.
Yeah. How's that going for you?
Holly, not so bad, but, uh, the intersection of Madison and Highway eleven is backed up pretty far, probably a couple miles. We did work with the state on that and asked if we could lower the speed limits or what we could do there, and we kind of determined that there was nothing we could really do there, and we're all just going to have to be mindful of the added traffic. Holly Boulevard usually has about ten thousand, uh, cars a day, and so now all of that is added to Madison. So the intersection's going to be a problem for the next thirty days.
So people need to divert over another road, probably?
Probably. I think the best route would be to take Tenth and then come in on Split Rock, so you don't have to stop at the stop sign.
Okay.
So that pay app is a hundred and ninety-one thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and thirty-two cents.
Motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve pay app number one for Holly Boulevard. Any discussion? How did it go with, um, having the water off on Saturday? Was that a, I know it's an issue, but...
Yep. Um, it went about an hour, hour and a half longer than what we planned it to be, but other than that, I don't think there were any major issues.
Got it done.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, um, okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay. Keep this going, Tammy. What else is going on?
Uh, phase one core area reconstruction for the final design. Um, this fee is two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars with HDR.
Move to approve. I don't see it online, but...
You don't see the, I've got, is it on page fifty-one?
Yeah, it starts on page fifty-one.
It's a long one.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Another fifty-four pages.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve phase one final design with HDR. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Okay, Tammy, we're adding up the dollars here. Man. Okay? What else? Well, now we're moving on to water and sewer. We've got the report from AE2S and their recommendations. Okay?
Phil and Kevin Felderbor and Kevin Smith are here from AE2S.
Hey, guys. Here we are again. I know you lo- I know you love us.
Um, I promise it won't be an hour. I think last time we were allocated fifteen minutes and expanded it a little bit, so we're, we only have nine slides this time. So, um, just after we spent that hour with you last time, we met with the Water Development Committee twice. Uh, the first to present the results of the study with them, and then sort of let them stew on that a little bit, and came back again, uh, just a little bit earlier this month, and they came forward with the recommendation. And so what I'd like to do is just provide a brief overview of the study and then outline their recommendations. And I believe you have a couple of, uh, resources. I think there's a seven, eleven by seventeen sheet that basically has these slides on it. So our objective was to evaluate the long-term sustainability of water sources, estimate the future demand, and then come up with some ideas for alternatives for long-term water supply for the city of Brandon. So through that, uh, we had several pieces. One was to establish what the future water needs would be and the basis of planning, uh, to review the existing water system, mainly the wells and the water treatment plant and the aquifers associated with the wells. Come up with some water quality objectives, and, and the Water Development Committee , uh, really helped with that, started to think about what should be the long-term objectives for treatment and water quality for Brandon. Uh, did a, uh, we had a partner, WSP. It's a consulting firm that does hydrogeological studies that, uh, explored the availability of water from the Big Sioux Aquifer and the Split Rock Creek Aquifer, and also reviewed water quality associated with those. And then from that background information, developed some alternatives. And those are the alternatives that we went through with you last time at length in quite a bit of detail, and then finally, uh, looked at some implementation steps. So just, uh, in terms of the basis of planning, uh, the green line and the blue line represent the potential future water source needs, depending upon the treatment that's desired. The blue line would be the, the need that's required if we continue on with the existing, uh, uh, mode of treatment, and the green line would be what would be needed if you're considering reverse osmosis to do softening of the water. The red line represents the capacity of the treatment plant, the existing treatment plant, and the black line, sorry, the red line represents the capacity of the existing wells. There's two wells that the city currently uses, and the black line represents the capacity of existing treatment plant. And so you can see that, uh, it's pretty urgent that you move forward, especially with the, uh, development of additional treatment and, uh, source capacity for Brandon to be able to meet the future needs. We looked at some short-term alternatives, uh, searched around with, uh, regional water sources, uh, uh, talked with the city of Sioux Falls, and talked with, um, Minnehaha Community Water Corporation and Lewis and Clark Row Water. And from those discussions, Minnehaha Community offered a quarter of a million gallons per day of treated water, uh, for the next five years, and could not project the availability of water beyond that to the city of Brandon. That water would come to Brandon as treated water, it's softened, um, as is the state of Minnehaha Community's water, and, um, that would be blended with the treated water from the Brandon Treatment Plant at a consistent ratio. So during the maximum day of the year, you might use that quarter of a million gallons. During the rest of the year, it would just be proportional to the amount of water that Brandon would be used, using. To compare that, we looked at, uh, other alternatives for providing additional water for Brandon in the short term. So the MCWC option became alternative one. Alternative two was to connect well three, which is a current well that Brandon has, to the water treatment plant and add source capacity, and actually, that would also provide capacity long-term. Alternative three was to utilize existing well seven, which is, is offline, uh, pending, uh, some further discovery of how well the existing treatment plant can remove the radium from that well. Alternative four is to add a radium removal technology to well seven, uh, treating, uh, the radium at that well and then bringing it to the treatment plant. And considering those alternatives and the costs associated with them, uh, it was, uh, recommended that the city of Brandon, uh, moves forward with, uh, developing those well sources rather than to purchase water from Minnehaha Community. So, uh, in addition to, uh, that background study of the short term, there was, uh, a study that was, uh, being accomplished by WSP, uh, looking at the, uh, Big Sioux Aquifer and the Split Rock Creek Aquifer for long-term water availability. Uh, what I'm showing here is just one of the, uh, plots that shows, uh, areas where they felt the best probability would be for additional wells in the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. And as, uh, that was evaluated against availability of, uh, uh, water from the Big Sioux Aquifer, that became an alternative for future expansion as well as, uh, obtaining water from the Big Sioux Aquifer. And so, um, looking at, uh, the long-term alternatives, uh, there were two available water sources. Uh, the alternative one was to obtain additional water from the Big Sioux Aquifer and then make up the difference to the need with Split Rock Creek, uh, water development. And then the source alternative two was simply to focus on the Split Rock Creek Aquifer and phase in wells from that, uh, to meet the demand. Um, it was determined that the Big Sioux Aquifer in the region that was researched by WSP would not be able to make up the total future water demand, uh, but the Split Rock Creek could, according to their conclusions. Well, you have to treat that water, and so in addition to looking at the source, we looked at options for treatment. One option was to use the existing treatment process, which accomplishes iron and manganese removal and also radium removal at, at an expanded water treatment plant. Uh, the treatment plant does need to be expanded in order to meet the demand. Option B is to use the existing process and add a radium-specific removal technology for treating the higher radium, uh, uh, water from well number seven. Option C is to utilize existing process and add reverse osmosis, uh, to treat a portion of the water that's been treated at the treatment plant. That reverse osmosis technology would remove hardness and dissolve solids from water in order to make the finished water be similar to the water that's in the surrounding communities and rural water systems. Option D is actually accomplishing the most treatment. It's using WRT at well number seven and then also reverse osmosis. So as you look from options A through D, you're accomplishing a higher degree of treatment with each option, and as a result, the costs, uh, for treatment, uh, go up, moving from option A to option D. So, uh, the costs of these were evaluated and summarized, and also the non-cost considerations for each of these alternatives were evaluated as well. And we appreciate, uh, the, I guess, the, the, the community of Brandon, uh, through the Water Development Committee and the Brandon staff and a couple of city, uh, councilors who, uh, participated in the non-cost evaluation to come up with a ranking of these alternatives against each other. And as a result of that ranking, uh, in considering both the cost and the non-cost benefits, I guess you would call it, uh, of each of these technologies, the Water Development Committee, in their last meeting, recommended, uh, choosing alternative B, which is to, um, alternative to B, sorry, which is to focus on developing additional water from the Split Rock Creek Aquifer and, uh, option B. So as you look at the features of that decision, uh, this is really where the meat of what the future looks like, and I have another slide showing an implementation timeline. Uh, the recommendation is to develop the Split Rock Creek Aquifer to meet the future water needs. There are several sub-points that are, uh, to be accomplished to, to do that. One is to engage the Water Rights Program of DENR to, uh, ensure that the future water needs are met, uh, from the aquifers. Uh, to initiate a second phase of the WSP proposal, I don't know if you all were aware in that the initial proposal for the study included two phases of hydrogeological investigation. The first phase was what they accomplished. It's more of a desktop study to look at the potential for development. And then the second phase is essentially to answer some of the questions that arose out of the first phase and fill in some of the data gaps that would enable Brandon to have, uh, a high degree of, uh, confidence about the future of using the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. And so I recommend, uh, recommendation, and the committee agreed with this, was to initiate that second, uh, phase of the WSP hydrogeological approach. And then explore potential well locations. There's quite an area that was identified, and so that's a part of, uh, developing that. And then also to pipe well three to the water treatment plant. Uh, that's something that really doesn't require any additional study, other than to develop plans and specifications to connect well three, uh, to the water treatment plant, so it can be used on a year-round basis rather than just on an emergency basis, as it is right now. For treatment, uh, the recommendation is to, uh, to choose option B, utilizing existing treatment approach at the water treatment plant, expanding the treatment plant to meet the future demand, and then, uh, add the WRT, uh, that process, that, uh, radium-specific removal process to treat, to get additional removal of radium from, from well number seven. And also, the Development Committee recognized, uh, the, the benefit of RO and recommended that that be, uh, kept out there as an option, um, uh, for, uh, future, uh, removal of, of hardness and total dissolved solids. So what that means is to utilize and optimize the existing, uh, HMO and IMR treatment technology for radium removal at the treatment plant, uh, to develop that R, WRT radium removal idea, uh, that concept, uh, to provide a multiple barrier for radium from well number seven. This technology has the capability to remove radium to near zero, uh, far less than the drinking water standard. Expand the water treatment plant to meet the 2045 demands as an increment with an additional phase thereafter. Um, and then, uh, provide space and hydraulic features in the treatment plant to enable future, uh, RO option to match, uh, TDS and hardness. Turns out that that's a pretty modular system. The RO comes on a skid, and you can put the plumbing in, in the expansion to the treatment plant to enable that addition to happen in the future. Uh, would be something that could be planned into the design of the treatment plant. And then finally, to include processes to, uh, address filter backwash residuals requirements that, uh, came as a result of discussion with the city of Sioux Falls, since they accept the wastewater from, uh, the water treatment plant. And then finally, to continue, um, uh, looking at regional water sources, um, and to partner, not partner, but continue the discussion with, uh, MCWC, the city of Sioux Falls, and Lewis and Clark, to explore, uh, options for water supply beyond 2045. Um, you know, throughout this study, we've cautioned the, the folks that are participating with us that this is a plan based upon what we know now, and we can't predict, uh, the future fifty years. We've done the best we can to come up with those ideas, but a plan is continuously updated, and a part of that could include, uh, partnering or, uh, developing relationships with, uh, these other regional water suppliers to, uh, expand the portfolio of water that's available to the city of Brandon. Um, the other, uh, thing to consider is to look at the financial part of this, and so... that this is a plan based upon what we know now, and we can't predict the future 50 years. We've done the best we can to come up with those ideas, but a plan is continuously updated. And a part of that could include partnering or developing relationships with these other regional water suppliers to expand the portfolio of water that's available to the City of The other thing to consider is to look at the financial part of this. And so, again, there's quite an extensive development of the costs associated with the alternatives. We show the cost of Alternative 2B, which is the one that was recommended by the Water Development Committee. And there you can see that assuming certain interest rates and a term that the debt for that represents about $1 million a year of cost. Alternative 2C adds an additional $300,000 a year cost to that. Alternative 2C is adding RO in. So it's essentially creating a treated water that matches up with the surrounding communities in terms of hardness and dissolved solids. We show these and compare them with other improvements, just some estimates of what some of the other improvements might be, given information from the Brandon staff. And so you can see, as you compare this with the planned core improvements, and this is an initial planning-level guesstimate of what that might be, that could add $400,000 of debt to the water fund, annual payment. And then also, the water towers would add an increment of debt load to the water fund as well. So your opportunity as a city council is to think about how these get phased to make sure that the Brandon future water needs are met and also accomplish some of the initiatives that you started developing already. Good question is always, you know, well, how is it going to influence the rate? And so we've shown on these lines all of the alternatives that we considered and the rates associated with them. And the black line at the bottom simply represents a 2.5% increase on the base, I guess I'd call it the water rate right now. And so what we've got is the estimated cost per 6,000-gallon monthly water bill, and you're in about the $35, $36 range right now. And the black line would simply represent inflating that to match the inflation rate. And you can see that, you know, depending on the alternative, the light blue, Alternative 2B would cause an increase in the rate to fund that. The dashed blue line represents Alternative 2B with a higher degree of water being used in Well Number 7 where that WRT technology would be used. And then the dark blue, Alternative 2C, represents a reverse osmosis option. And so I guess the purpose of showing all these is to simply say that the more treatment that you undergo in the facility, the more cost it is. And so in considering that, the Water Development Committee felt that Alternative 2B was an appropriate option for the City of Brandon in terms of the value for the cost. If you stack up all of those expenses onto the water fund and just phase them right in, it could have a pretty substantial influence on the water rate. And so if all those projects were implemented without consideration of phasing, you would have a pretty substantive increase in the water rate. And so our recommendation, again, to the staff and to you as a council, is to think about how you phase those projects in play and think about the impact of that on the water rate. This last slide is a timeline for implementation, and we've shown some fairly general blocks of time, but wanted to make sure that the city understood the steps that would be needed to implement these alternatives. And so up on the upper part, in the brown color, you see the, maybe that's gold, you see the administrative things that need to happen in order to move forward with water rights procurement, maybe some land acquisition if well sites are identified, Sioux Falls residual disposal discussions, I referred to this earlier, that there's a need to continue to explore and understand the impact of disposing the residuals from the treatment plant to the City of Sioux Falls. Some studies are suggested here, and you know, some of these aren't that big. Some of them are internal. For example, the WTP IMR HTMO optimization represents Brandon further optimizing their treatment process to get the best treatment available from the process that they've implemented. Well Number 7 sits out there, and one option is for the city to blend that water with the other sources, making the resulting raw water have a lower radionuclide concentration than just Well 7 alone, and then treating that at the treatment plant as an option, utilizing the radium removal technology that's in place right now. And that can be an experimental, a testing approach that can be implemented to understand how the treatment plant can be optimized to remove radium from those. There's the WSP report or approach study that I recommended or that came out of the committee deliberations. This would help Brandon have further confidence in the availability of water from the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. Couple of plant studies, one might be a WRT pilot study. The company that offers that technology has a pilot study that they can run if the city determined that they would like a higher degree of confidence on the capability of that technology to treat water from Well 7. They could implement a fairly inexpensive pilot study to come up with a better feel for that. If RO is chosen, from the deliberations of the committee, it seemed like that would be an option for the future, depending upon the desire to understand that better, one could do a pilot plant. The benefit of the pilot plant would be more about understanding the residuals disposal from that, which would be need to be discharged to a receiving stream, very likely the Big Sioux River, and there are discharge permit requirements for that. And the pilot study would gain knowledge regarding the discharge permit requirements for that. And then finally, you get into the construction of these alternatives. Well Number 8 is currently in design to be constructed. The well has already been drilled, and there's some finishing work to be done to get that well ready to go. To pipe Well 3 to the water treatment plant, it's a design and season and construction season associated with that. Our recommendation is for the city to proceed forward with the expansion of the existing water treatment plant. And then if the council agrees with the recommendation of the Water Development Committee, that the new WRT radium removal technology be explored and designed for Well Number 7. Off to the right are some additional blocks, new SRC well exploration and construction. The city doesn't need to install another well immediately, but as the demand grows, it's recommended that that source be further explored. So that's why they're out there as a reminder that as the, I guess I'd call it, the firm capacity of the well field reaches a certain percentage of the demand, that that be explored and that that construction occur. So that's the last slide. Woo. It's time to wake up. So thanks. It's been great working with the committee. If there's questions, I'd be glad to answer those. I know that was longer than 10 minutes, but it wasn't an hour, was it?
Del, I have a question, Del.
Yes.
So when the last water development meeting, I didn't feel like any of the committee members had a super-strong push for RO, but I know leaving the door open was discussed a lot. But I don't recall hearing any discussion on some of what these costs would be to leave that door open, like when we're talking about including hydraulic features and doing this pilot plant testing for RO. For something that may never come to fruition, because I'm not sure that $5 million for RO is something I fully support at this point, but can you, do you have any ballpark, I mean, what we're looking at to?
You know, I just, I really don't have that number on the back of my head. I would imagine that in the design development, in other words, as you look at the actual design of the treatment plant, that that number could be developed fairly quickly. It's a matter of, for an RO system, having a concrete slab that you can land the RO system on and associated piping to bring water from the existing treatment process with a pump through the RO system, and then the discharge from that RO system be placed back in what we call the clear well to be blended with the other water that's been treated. So a part of the cost will be the building to house that. In many cases, this is simply a slab on grade into which the equipment can be placed, and there's some associated tanks for cleaning the membranes and so forth, chemicals for cleaning and so forth. And in many cases, there's a garage door on this building in order to enable skids to be brought in. And so it appears a lot, even though, yeah, it needs to be heated and so forth and have ventilation and that kind of thing associated with it. It's a fairly easy addition to put onto a plant. It's also fairly easy to repurpose it if it's used for storage, used for other purposes, and then be transformed into treatment if that decision's made. And so to me, it would be a part of the development of the costs and a decision to be made as to whether or not to add that facility or that capability on to the treatment plant expansion. So I don't have a cost. I would imagine it's going to be, to provide the capability would be on the order of $1 million or $1.5 million on capital cost for the housing. Equipment's a pretty substantive cost of the $5 million. So that's the best guess. Yeah.
Really putting you on the spot here, but I know a big concern with RO is the discharge. Well, the conservation is concerning because you waste water with RO, but then the discharge and meeting the DENR requirements for that discharge. I mean, realistically, is that something, in your opinion, that we would be able to do?
Yes. So, well, is that something you'd be able to do? Has a bunch of things.
Well, the discharge.
The pilot study, the pilot study would affirm whether or not there would be an issue relative to discharge. So that's a fairly, again, pretty inexpensive study because really what you need to simply do is run it through a small unit and then evaluate the concentrations of matter coming out of there. And so it's a fairly common thing to do a pilot study, to establish what the concentrate looks like, to understand the characteristics relative to disposal. But a key thing to enable that to happen is to optimize the existing treatment process for radionuclide removal. And so I think there's an opportunity. It was one of the bullets or the things to develop is to understand how the existing treatment process can be optimized to basically do the best that it can because that treated water then becomes the feedwater to the RO. And if you mitigated the radium as best you can from the existing treatment process, then that's going to minimize the amount of radium in the discharge. And the radium level and the discharge to the Big Sioux River is going to be the most difficult part of the discharge part of it. So I think we wouldn't have suggested this as an option if it wouldn't be a doable thing. The approach to RO enables the City of Brandon to be able to provide a softer water. In the original discussion with the committee, the discussion led us down the path of, if it's feasible, then let's offer that as an option. Feasibility has to do with all of these things, including cost. And so, you know, I think the choice of whether or not to enable RO to be added in as a future option might come down to the cost of facilitating that in the design development and determining whether or not that cost is appropriate for the taxpayers to pay. And then the second thing would be if it is a future option, then can that space that would be allocated to that be repurposed in the early term for some other beneficial use for the City of Brandon? So that's how I think about that, you know. Again, the whole idea of this range of alternatives was to provide choices, and the Water Development Committee agreed with the option of Alternative 2B. And like this idea of potentially adding the RO in if it's feasible, and that feasibility, you know, comes out in terms of what the cost might be and so forth. It's the best answer I can give you. We didn't evaluate the added cost of leaving the door open for RO as a part of the evaluation. It really came on at the end after we had already developed the alternatives. Best I can do for that, sorry.
So, Del, do we have any idea of what the percentage increase would be if we did the RO versus the Alternative 2B? Do we have any idea? Is that a 10%?
Yeah, could we go back to the slides?
Because I think that's a criticism we've had from our residents.
Sure.
And if it's a 50% number or a 10% number, you know, there might be some wiggle room there.
Yep. So if you look at the solid blue line, oh, and I have to make sure that you understand that these are the costs to the water rate that would be incurred if you only implemented the source and treatment project. There are other things that you're planning to do, and I just need to make sure that you understand that the rates that we show here are just focusing on implementing the source and treatment thing and not the core improvements, not the towers. And so, you know, as you blend and sort of phase those all in, so if you look at the light blue line, you can see a cost increment. And if you look at the 2024 number there, it's at about $50 per 6,000 gallons. And if you look at the dark blue line, you can see the cost there of about $65 per 1,000 gallons after the treatment has been built. So also notice, there's a dashed blue line there, and the dashed blue line represents utilizing Well Number 7 at a higher rate. In other words, man, we got Well 7, let's just push it through the plant. And because the WRT technology has a treatment cost associated with that, the more you use that technology, the more will be the maintenance cost associated with that. So if you utilize Well 7 a lot, a lot of WRT, then the cost of doing that pushes the cost of Alternative 2B up close to where the RO cost would be. So the other slide I have to show the differences is this slide right here. So this would be if you fully implemented RO in a treatment facility. We have 20.5 million for, that includes connecting Well Number, Well Number 3 in, and you know, a few other piping considerations and so forth, and then also the discharge pipe to the river. So from a capital cost perspective, that difference is about $5 million if you would implement it right away. So Dana, when you came, sorry, Councilwoman Clark, you know, when you asked that question, what I'm saying is that the cost of the option is the building and a floor slab and some heating, ventilation, air conditioning, that kind of thing. So I'm guessing in that range of, you know, $1 to $2 million, leave the door open with the existing construction. That's not to say that you couldn't build it in the future, but it's always good, if you have that in mind, to think about hydraulics and how piping goes. And as you're building the expansion to the facility with a few dollars into piping, you make connection of an RO system into the treatment plant much easier. But I understand, you know, it's a water quality choice. Going with RO is basically taking you from your hardness of about 400 milligrams per liter down to about 200 milligrams per liter. And so, you know, it is certainly a choice that can be made, and there was quite a bit of discussion at the Water Development Committee about that, about that option.
If we're looking at a difference of $50 a month versus 65, if my math is correct, that's a 30% bump for more soft water.
It's all about the value of better water quality to your customers. And so absolutely, if you were considering that, it would be a great idea for you to educate the community about what this means and enable them to understand how that brings value to them. You know, in some cases, it's going to reduce their salt bill for softening. And so it's like a trade-off. It's probably not a one-to-one trade-off, but still, it represents a savings that they would... would realize in their home treatment unit versus what you would be expending in their monthly water bill.
And I think we have to be careful not to price ourselves out of the market for our people that maybe aren't quite as that fluent as some of our other folks.
Totally understood.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, that helps.
You're welcome.
Okay, any questions for the council?
The next step, there's, there's a number of next steps involved. One, as we discussed at the budget work sessions, we're including cost estimates for preliminary design for the upgrade of the water treatment plant. So we're looking at that starting to take place in 2020 with hopefully construction to take place in 2021, 2022, with it going online in 2023. That's our current timeframe. So between now and, you know, before we get too deep into that preliminary design discussion with a consulting engineer, the council will need to make that determination whether or not you want to move forward with RO or accept the committee's recommendation of building infrastructure for it, a shell of a building, but not installing the equipment yet. So that's, that's a pretty significant discussion the council will need to have. Two, we will need to engage fairly soon DNR to talk about future water rights in the Split Rock Creek Aquifer, to make sure that we can secure those so that when we do need to drill that new well, it'll be there for us. Three, we need to, the council needs to consider a proposal from WSP for that next study. And in that study, the, the big thing, the data gap, the big one there is, is the Split Rock Creek Aquifer recharging? That's been a big question, that, that there is no data, or there's some data that indicates that it is to a degree. That study would, would beef that up a little bit. So it would certainly, I think, give the council a little more reassurance that yes, it's a good decision to proceed into the Split Rock Creek or ultimately it might be a bad one. So that, that WSP proposal, and Tammy is, is going to be contacting them to get a proposal, updated number, because as Dell indicated, it was included in the, in the A2S proposal, but that was a year ago. So we'll get a, we'll get an updated number from WSP to complete that report. So those are the short-term items.
So do you anticipate us doing those council meetings, setting up work sessions?
That's up, that's up to the council. What we're anticipating, a couple of things that we will have on the council agenda fairly soon is hopefully the WSP proposal. We'll also get a proposal in front of you for a rate analysis for Water Department. And then we will be developing an RFP for the preliminary design on the treatment plant by the end of the year. Don't want to put pressure on you. So.
We're looking at A2S helping us with those water rate projections?
That's, we've, we've solicited a proposal from them to do that rate study, including tiered rates. So those are all the short-term. And it is part of that RFP, we'll need, Tammy and I will need to discuss it, but some expertise in engaging DNR on water rights, because that's a whole different law. And then also included in there is developing a facility plan. If we're going to, if we want to look at the state SRF for financing the treatment plant upgrade, we need to have a preliminary or a facility plan sent to the state and approved. So that would be included in that, that RFP.
I have a question about the talks with Lewis and Clark, phase two. So are we trying, who reaches out to them?
We will.
To try to start. So administration will reach out to them and try to get the ball going? I know it's a ways out, but we need to have those conversations now.
No, they've extended invitation through A2S to us, and they will send us one, but I will contact their executive director and make sure that when they're talking about phase two or Lewis and Clark two, that they invite us to the table.
And then who meets yourself and then as a council member or the mayor, who goes to those meetings?
You know, right now it'd probably be staff, probably the city engineer, myself.
And I think one other thought is if we do decide to use well seven, we're going to have to do a public media campaign on the safety of well seven.
Correct, that was, that was brought up. At some point in time, we probably need to do some type of test run, very short test run, but we will engage some engineers to help us with figuring out how much water we can run through the plant and treat. So it might be 100 gallons a minute, it might be 200, I don't know what that number is, but we will not put, we will, we will not jeopardize the safety of our citizens. We will, we will make those parameters very safe in order to determine what we can treat out of well seven.
Could I just add to that? You know, that, that concept was tested in a pilot study using the technology that you've implemented in the treatment plant. And in the pilot study, there was success in, in getting a good, high percent removal. And so it's a matter of scaling up that pilot study with a short duration test to be able to gather full-scale data to understand what that is. And so, you know, as we've talked with staff, you know, that really needs to be an organized approach that assures the safety of the treated drinking water and it's, it's doable.
And, and I'm confident that it is doable, but as we've seen numbers and so-called facts can get skewed pretty quickly.
Yeah, I understand.
So we just want to be really solid on that, and we'll probably need some help with that.
Yeah.
What about well three? Do we need to move quickly on well three or do we have enough capacity at this point that, that is kind of a phased-in thing?
Well, that's, that's open for discussion right at the moment. Staff, staff has started discussing, discussing well three. If we choose to bring well three down to the treatment plant in the next year or two, we would like to keep a valve so that we could still pump it directly into the system. Because if you look at our, our system, the, the treatment plant is the bottleneck. So it doesn't make much sense to push 600 gallons a minute into the treatment plant. If, you know, we're already at 2,000 gallons a minute pushing, we won't get 600 more through the plant. So that may, that may boil down to reconstruction in the core, reconstruction of Split Rock or Split Rock Boulevard with DOT. They're talking about doing that, although we want to move a little bit sooner than they do. You know, it might be a component of the water treatment plant upgrade, but it does need to be done sometime in the near future. So we'll start looking at that as well.
Anything else, council?
I have a question. I can't see.
If I understand it correctly, I mean, we're kind of at a little bit of a standstill until we get the data gap information from WSP. Isn't that kind of like super pertinent to make any decisions af, after that?
That, that would be a, a good, a good study. You know, we as staff always hesitate to recommend more and more study to the council because we study a lot of stuff. But in this case, there are some unknowns in the Split Rock Creek Aquifer. It's not a, there's plenty of test wells out there and monitoring wells, but it hasn't been an overly studied aquifer, is my understanding. So, you know, one more, one more step, just to ensure, assure the council and the public that it is an appropriate water source would be, would be good. Like I said, we'll, we'll work with WSP to get a proposal hopefully in front of you for the September 3rd council meeting. Yep.
Any idea how long that study would take, assuming we got them going?
We don't, we don't know until we get the proposal from them.
I just might add that they, in their first phase, which was more of a desktop study, came up with a hydro, a conceptual hydro geological model, they called it. And in that learned some things they didn't know when they developed the prior proposal that they can use to refine this existing, the next step of that, so that you get the most value from this. So, you know, it's a great idea to engage this, and that will just increase the confidence that the community has in the long-term sustainability of that aquifer. So it's, it's a very wise choice to engage that and, you know, as soon as possible to keep the, the thing moving along, at the same time engaging the state, the ENR water rights folks, and, you know, answer some of these other, I would say, preliminary questions that will enable the, the design of the treatment facility to proceed forward. So, you know, to me, it's, it's all a sort of a succession. And the graphic that I created that showed how these things can go alongside each other really gives our best idea of how that can proceed forward.
So once we have decided on some recommendations, that'd be a great story, Jamie.
Yeah, a series of stories. You know, the other nice thing with the W, with the WSP study, if you look on that map that shows the, the location, it might help us pinpoint a little more accurately where we should be drilling a well, because we, I'd love to go out and just start poking holes and find the sweet spot, but unfortunately it doesn't work that way. So if we can narrow that search area down a little bit, Riley could, or Donovan, I can't.
Thank you so much.
It's been a great pleasure working with the community on this and just look forward to anything we can assist you with in the future. Thank you.
So what I'd ask the council to do is just accept the report, a motion to accept the report. You're not, you're not accepting the recommendations, so.
So we have a motion to accept the water report and recommendations from A2S. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? All right, we're accepted and we will continue to move on with that. Looping project, change order number one. We don't like change orders, Tammy.
This one doesn't really cost us any money.
Oh, okay.
This one is just a time change. The contractor for the water looping project on Redwood was not able to start when they wanted to because of another contractor on Redwood putting in the storm sewer near Split Rock there. So this is just allowing them 35 more days to finish the project. Yeah, yeah, the Redwood portion is done. They hope to pave this week if the sub base dries out. But this project also includes this section on Aspen by Country Club that they have started, so.
We'll do approve.
Motion is second to approve change order number one on Redwood and Aspen Main Looping. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? All right, moving on to pay application number two.
Yep, same project. This one's for $78,489.
This will approve. Second.
Motion to approve the pay order for application number three, that's two, two. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. Number three, good grief.
This one, this one they finished today. They finished striping and putting in the looping for the traffic signal. So this application is $139,278.65. So hopefully we have final pay app at the next meeting or next month.
Second.
Motion to approve pay app number three, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Next one?
And then the, our main sewer project, this is pay app number one and number two. Number one is for the amount of $292,106.97. And most of that was for materials that they brought on site.
We'll do approve.
All in favor? Are we just doing one or is that one and three? One and three or interceptor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. And the final one?
And well number nine, change order. When they were out developing the well, they discovered that it's not going to produce as much as we hoped. We wanted about 200 to 250 gallons per minute, and it's only going to produce about 75. So this is a change order to cap it and abandon that well.
Just not worth it? All in favor of change order on well number nine?
Aye.
Closed? Okay. Any new business? Executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for potential litigation.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to go into executive session for a potential litigation. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? All right.